I pledge allegiance to the flag of the highest states of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This session of the Lincoln County Commission on April the 19th, 2011 at 4:00 p.m. will soon thereafter is now called in order. Members present Donald E. Whitney Clark, Charles McCann, President Charles Vance Commissioner, Thomas Ramey Commissioner. First thing on the agenda, I need a motion to approve the amendments of the Regno Session of the Lincoln County Commission meeting that was held on April the 7th, 2011 at 6:00 p.m.
So, motion second, being all yes voted, motion carries.
Next thing is, I need a motion to adopt the levy rates and the levy estimate budget for the property taxation for the fiscal year 2011, 2012. And you will see in your file, but we did get a notice of approval of the levy estimate.
No objections. You entertain a motion to adopt the levy rates, a set in motion second. Motion second, all yes, motion carries.
Next thing on the agenda is Rick Roberts.
Welcome, Rick.
Thank you. As you know, Governor Manchin awarded some money for a couple of projects in Lincoln County. One of those is the Phase 1 of the Big Ugly Water Line Extension Project. And that's a project just to buy materials and then the Logan County PSD is actually going to do the extension. The grant was for $260,000 and it requires a 10% match, actually a $286,000 project. And what I've done is prepare the community participation grant program application for that project. And I have, I guess, four copies, original and three copies. And I've got a tag there.
Is this one that is in as a regular item, also separate vote or anything we need to vote on?
No, he needs to vote now.
Okay. You heard the presentation from Rick about the $260,000 for the Big Ugly that requires also a 10% match locally. You entertain a motion to accept and approve that request.
So, second.
Motion in second, all yes, motion carries.
Can you look at the whole copy of that?
Yeah, you want me to mail it in? Okay, I need the letter.
Oh, well, you want me to mail it? I can mail it. I'll have a copy of them.
Either way, it might be best on your letter.
Yeah, let me do that.
Or to keep the original and the copy of it.
How many homes is it going to be available?
Forty homes. It's about three miles. If you would let the Logan PSD know that we really appreciate their willingness to come into Lincoln County and help with these underserved areas. I will listen to that.
And why don't you, there's, somebody asked me about Pioneer, that area up in the northwest.
That's off what we call the Marsh Fort Water Project. And that project's funded. We're just waiting on some financial information so that we can submit it to the public service.
Okay.
The second is the Francis Creek Project. And in this case, this is really for the bulk of the seed money to help facilitate a project that pays lot costs and stuff on a project that will extend water to 84 homes on Francis Creek. And in this case, Governor Manchin, or ex-Governor Manchin, Senator Manchin, whatever, obligated $150,000 to the project. And it also requires a 10% match. And I've also prepared an application for that.
Heard your request and again within your motion to approve that 50, was it 150,000?
150,000 plus 15.
Plus 10% match or 15?
Yes, 15.
Second, all yes, motion carries. Is that for like engineering design money or?
It'll be for engineering. There'll be accounting, legal, property acquisition, all those sort of things that you have to do before you can actually go to construction.
Main thing, we're getting people some water.
Yes.
On the, many of the little hearts probably, some junction, recent closure, will there be maybe extra monies or anything, it's not used, the contingency monies, whatever, we sit down and talk about anything about how we might use that? Or is that?
Well, we sent a request in to the Infrastructure Council to go up toward Van's Knob with it. There was not a lot left, so we had already started up Van's Knob and we'll go a little further up.
And we think everything's working out on Van's Knob or something?
Yes, yes. And that's all I had unless you had questions on some of the other projects.
Hearing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Next thing on the agenda is Jim Boss.
Good afternoon.
Jim.
Thank you for putting me on the agenda. All right, first thing I have, and this is just for your records, I brought you a copy of the Big Hearts Small Cities Application that we submitted this year. It's been two months since we submitted that and haven't heard anything back from. So, we assume everything's in order as far as the application's concerned. And with that, I'll proceed on here to a couple of project related items for the Upper Little Heart Street project. And you mean there's you a copy of both items? The first item I have for you all today is a budget amendment. And this is budget amendment number four. And the purpose of this budget amendment is we had some remaining unspent funds in the accounting and legal line items. It's about $3,000 in accounting and $8,606.73 in the legal line item. And we didn't anticipate that towards in the project, we don't anticipate we're going to expend those funds for those purposes. So, what this budget moment does is request that we take the balance of those funds, which is $11,606.73, and we're simply just reallocating that over to the construction line item. And I'll have a drawdown here in just a second that will allow us to go ahead and expend all those funds, the balance of those funds out today. But anyway, so that's all that does. It doesn't increase or decrease the total small cities block grant award. We're just simply moving funds from two of the line items and putting those into the construction line item. Now, I'll send that to your approval.
Okay, we have a motion here, Jimmy, request.
So.
Motion in second, approve request, some $11,606 in transfer. All yes, motion carries.
Budget amendment approved. I do have a drawdown request. And this is drawdown request number 13. And it's in the amount of $15,784.52. Included as part of this drawdown are four invoices from Region 2 Planning Development Council, and that's for Small Cities Grand Administration Services for December 2010 through March of 2011, which totals $4,177.79. And also in it, one invoice from Welding Incorporated, period I passed on my number three, in the amount of $20,900. Of course, again, all we have left in that construction line item is $11,606.74. So, the balance of that is $9,293.27, which Rick will actually present tonight at the Logan PSD meeting. And that'll be paid out of the infrastructure funds. So, we're paying, just like I say, the $11,606.74. And with that, I'll submit this drawdown for your all's approval.
Is your motion.
Motion.
Second. Motion second, all yes, motion carries.
And I wasn't going to give you an update, but Rick did a pretty good job with that. Saved me the trouble.
Are you handling any of the 10 mile stuff?
Yes.
Well, how's that?
Just got a letter back from Memphis Water Council. They had requested to be able to use some additional funds, about $403,000 left over from the Route 37 project. And they received that letter this week and they approved that. So, we'll be able to go ahead and proceed. Should have all funding in place now.
Does that do want to be a claim?
Should be going to bid this summer.
We have all funding, ladies debate.
Yeah, that was the only thing, was holding it up right now is we just had to submit that back to the Infrastructure Council for their approval. So, actually just got that in yesterday. Do you want to sign?
No, this is okay?
Okay, okay.
What do you think's going to happen to our monies for water, stuff like that with budget concerns?
I, I don't know. I was on a conference call last week and they were talking DRCs, but you know, till they actually start formalizing some budgets, we sort of don't know where we're at. I mean, we expect cuts, but we just don't know how deep right now. But we're sitting on pins and needles. Now, they cut our, we've had someone more funding cut as far as the DRC. Sure aware of that, but it's like $10,000 for our planning budget this year. So, you know, I don't know if it's going to be 10% across the board or maybe a little more depending on the program.
But they are coming?
Oh, they're coming, yeah, yeah.
10%, not even more, I mean, more.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. We're probably kind of lucky, just we got 10%, so, kind of blessings. Hope they don't get any worse. Well, that's all I have. If you all just let us know. All right, thank you very much.
Well, the whole business, Rick's not here. You want to give an update? We will go to Craig Mans.
Welcome, Craig. We have signed the contracts on Phase 3. And I was out in the watershed today. They have begun upgrades on the plumbing and electrical work at the first two houses. And they'll begin installing the systems next week on the 28th and 29th, Board Nymona. There was a little bit of rearranging there within that company with some personnel. So, we were a little worried, but everything's worked out and we're still on schedule with the 28th and the 29th. From what I understand, a guy named Braun from Alabama's coming up to do the training there at Mark Castings and Crystal Village. They've assured us that they will make sure they're comfortable with these installations. That if they need to go on to the third and fourth, we just wanted assurance that they, because Wiseman has never installed these Board Nymona systems before. They have provided classroom training for them, but we insisted on the onsite training. So, Board Nymonas give us these assurances that if they're not comfortable with them on the second installation, they'll be there for the third and the fourth and so on until they're comfortable with it. So, we feel real good about that. The maintenance organization met this past Wednesday. And we are closer to moving forward on a bid with this. And that's what you have here. It's what we have discussed and what we have up to this point. Now, I've been on the phone with the IRS for probably two weeks now and it's getting very frustrating. But from what I understand, on April the 2nd, our application went into review. From that 30 days, we're supposed to have an official notice of our nonprofit status. But Monday morning, there was a message waiting for me from Faith Cummins, who I've never actually spoken to, who has left me messages, telling me that she had another question. So, I don't know if that's going to push us further into May or possibly June before we get this ready to bid. We don't want to really accept any money until we have the nonprofit status. What you're looking at is the areas that we would cover under the bid. There's three main line items that we would cover. We would ask them to give us a price on the scheduled inspections for the routine maintenance. But DDP requires for anything that's discharged into the crew. That's usually on most of these systems twice a year. We'd ask them to bid on number B for the non-scheduled service repairs. If a pump went down or a UV light went out, we would ask them to give us an hourly rate on that. We would also ask them to give us a bottom line, how much they would charge us to come out if they were just there for 15 minutes. We would insist on an hourly rate and a flat rate. And we would also, we're requiring people who do not have the maintenance, are not up to date with their maintenance contract, before they can join the organization, they have to be up to date. And they have to use the provider that's designated by the board to say that the system's in work mode. And I'll leave that for the commission to look over if you have any questions or any ideas or things we're doing right or wrong.
In the meetings I've been to on the left flank, seems like most of the people that already have systems or going to get systems have no problem with the maintenance organization.
No, it's, I don't anticipate any problems with the community. These systems are, they do require a certain amount of maintenance. So, it's crucial that we really get this thing up and going because then if you, I mean, the systems, they need to be maintained.
I'm sure in the discussion, you talked about trying to reach a cost estimate, cost figure that would be affordable by the people.
We have, we're looking at an $8 a month thing now, where they would pay $8 a month. If they paid it a year in advance, they would get a month off. It would be $96 a year. If they paid a year in advance, it would be $88. We work on a 70/30 copay where the organization will be responsible for 70%. The homeowner will be responsible for 3%. So, it makes perfect sense. I mean, if a pump went down, they'd get their money back right then. And we require, one thing that we've done, required people on Phase 3 to join the maintenance organization, but not on the first two. And we've talked about, we took signups for Phase 4. We've begun that out of eight names. And we're wanting to require them to join the maintenance organization.
Sounds good. Appreciate it, thanks.
Next thing on the agenda is the Heart Centers Community Center and the Park and Coral Community Center. Chair, would you all want to give an update on what's going on at the Coral Community Center?
The outreach part is going right now. As far as the rest of it, I really don't know because I have to deal with that part. The donations will start to come in again and.
They're feeding them on five days a week now.
Yes, we'll take them five days a week.
And we get a new rule on ours this week, that's like, it's supposed to start anyway. All right.
Okay, on to new business. I need a motion to approve the settlement submitted by Craig.
So.
Motion in second, all yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to approve the appointment of Wilson Settlement Assistant Adalton Whitney Clark.
Motion second.
Motion in second, all yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to approve the agreement between B.I. Incorporated and the Lincoln County Commission to purchase a new home and confine that equipment. They give Charles S. McCann present authorization to sign this stated agreement.
So.
Motion in second, do we have a cost estimate in the lead? At least for new units or additional units that we have.
Is it all done?
If there's new ones. Yeah, we're replacing what they got or had additional.
Well, I don't know. That is a question I just don't know.
That's all I need to know. And we got a motion saying, I'll go ahead and call for the vote and then we get the information we're sharing then. Then all yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to approve the drawdown request, number one, in the amount of $50,000 from the Governor's Community Participation Grant and the project completion for the Little Hearts Creek Millstone Water Line. They give Charles S. McCann present authorization to sign this stated documents.
So.
Second. Motion in second, all yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to accept the resignation of Jennifer Johnson as Law Enforcement Secretary effective April the 7th, 2011.
Second.
Motion in second, being all yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to approve the drawdown request, number five, in the amount of $723.57 from the Governor's Community Participation Grant and the project completion for the Crown Watch. And give Charles S. McCann present authorization to sign this stated documents.
So.
Motion in second, being all yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to approve drawdown request, number one, in the amount of $310.79 from the Governor's Community Participation Grant for the Crown Watch. And give Charles S. McCann present authorization to sign this stated documents.
So.
Motion in second, all yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to appoint Norman Bronfield as Minister of the Estate of Russell Bronfield due to the death of the current exec.
Second.
Motion in second, being all yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to approve appointments done in vacation. Lincoln County Commission for Donald E. Whitney Clark as follows. Betty L. Hall is Executive to the Estate of Martha G. Calatine. Sally L. Justice is Administrator to the Estate of Boyd S. Justice. Cheryl P. Plumlee is Executive to the Estate of Nellie Plumlee. Linda Arun Manns is Executive to the Estate of Victoria Mildred Smith. Maria Osborn as Administrator to the Estate of Robert Lee Osborn. Norman Bronfield is Administrator to the Estate of Alice Bay Ron Bronfield. Linda Baldwin is Executive to the Estate of Michael Lee Miller. Terry McKiff is Administrator to the Estate of John A. McKiff. Curtis Roy Hill is Executive to the Estate of Elizabeth Hill. Arlene Todd is Administrator to the Estate of Dana Mae Abbott.
So.
Motion in second, all yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to adopt a resolution of participating cooperation for the West Virginia Certified Development Community CDC Program and designate the Lincoln Economic Development Authority as representing our community for the purpose of participating in this program.
So.
Motion in second, all yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to approve the Governor's Community Participation Grant Program Contract by and between Lincoln County Commission, the West Virginia Development Office for the renovation of the family quarter in the amount of $25,000 and give Charles S. McCann present authorization to sign this stated document.
So.
Motion in second, all yes, motion carries.
Okay, during one in the audience, it's not on the agenda. Would you like to speak at this time? Yes, missing. Well, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I just would like to thank the commission for your support of the prescription drug takeback day. And I think you all have copies of this. I will make you, I will give you copies, however, with, we're going to add the commission as a supporter. So, we're very grateful to you. I understand that you'll be sending out a letter to, to the churches in the area. And so more people can be aware of this very important event. So, that's all. I just want to say things are moving along nicely. We have three locations. We'll have an information desk. The sheriff will, is staffing the three locations with an officer. And let's see, what else? Didn't really come prepared to say much, but you know, we're expecting a much better turnout than the one in September.
If I may, I just would like to say, over the last week or so, you and I have talked about the Take Back Day. I appreciate Step by Step and yourself coming to the team with an idea, which I think is, is an idea that's going to be able to educate the county so that people know about this event. And in Step by Step, had the idea of the county commission partnering with Step by Step and sending letters out to the county churches. So, the churches can then tell their congregations about the event. I think that'll be really a effective way to get the message out.
Yes, they're fully aware of it. In fact, they are, everybody's cooperating. They're sending out a copy of the flyer and descriptions and the senior center has, is getting out a copy of the flyer. So, all of these are doing the same. Yes, we're giving a lot of support. Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak at this time?
This state by state, I mean, is the drug takeback, is that just equivalent to being at a drop off?
Anybody, anybody can drop off. This is a national event and you know, I think in some, some counties are not doing this. So, we're happy to have everybody's, yeah. Okay, commission can start.
On April the 9th, we can't, county grant writer Craig Mans and I went to the local government leadership academy in Morgantown. And during that two-day event, we were able to attend three different sessions. The first session was public management and leadership skills. And Craig, during this, if you have anything you want to interject, just feel free to. The, that particular session focused on local government officials and how we often find ourselves in situations characterized by high levels of conflict. And the workshop focused on strategies for avoiding and resolving conflict, conflict both between and among individuals and organizations. Participants were taught ways to build a better working relationship with county, city employees and among other offices. I just think it was, it was a session that really focused on making sure that you have a vision. If you have a vision, then it's easier to bring people together. And a lot of times, conflict is avoided just by being able to effectively share your vision. Next session, which was the one Craig was most interested in, was grant writing and the USDA programs. And I won't read in detail, but it was a session that focused on the effective way to go after grants and when to apply, also to highlight your strong points. And sometimes we might see areas that we consider weak points about where we live. But in the eyes of funders, they see that as strong points because those are the areas they would like to see us overcome.
It was interesting, I don't remember if I remember, it was interesting, when you talk about grants, you often, the first thing that comes to mind is money. And the first thing that she said was, don't ask for money. Because she said you limit yourself when you just ask for money, as opposed to when they could give you technical assistance or equipment. It was a different way of looking at things. So, and if a foundation or an organization calls, if you do ask for money, when they ask what it is you need, don't say, I need $25,000. Say, I need help with this particular project and explain what it is. So, they can understand what it is you want to do with the money they have provided. The final session was contemporary issues in drinking and wastewater. And the course presented an overview of contemporary water and wastewater issues of particular interest to local government. And I think that it will be helpful, especially in the left ward with the most water issues that you deal with. And it made me realize that, you know, a lot of times we see here in Lincoln County that we don't have a lot of sewage provided, public sewer. And we're not alone. All across the state, people are trying to, cities and towns to find ways to get those type of projects funded. I also attended the Lincoln Economic Development Authority Meeting on the evening of April 12. At the meeting, we finalized logistical issues regarding the upcoming candidate's economic form. Just found out though, that we do have a problem with the date and the time. University of Charleston has scheduled an event for the same evening, for the same exact time. Instead of scrapping the event, we're trying to figure out a way to maybe change the date or change the time so that we can still have the event and let the students at Lincoln County benefit from being able to participate in such an event. So, we will have more information in the coming days. On April the 12th, an open house was held at the former Woodville Elementary School for the Morrisville Fire Department and the Lincoln Primary Care Center. After thousands of dollars and countless volunteer hours, the former school facility has been transformed into a state of the art fire, health, and dental facility. Something that Lincoln County can be proud of. The facility also houses a state of the art computer lab, which was made possible through federal funding. The partnership of these groups has brought the much needed services that's now offered to this area that's underserved. The volunteer fire department and the primary care center should be applauded for their dedication to making this venture become a reality. It should also be noted that with the recent additions to the primary care center, they now employ over 100 people. now employ over 100 people. I attended the annual Lincoln County Fire School at Lincoln County High School on the 16th. The event, the event provided local and regional firefighters and emergency management officials an opportunity to receive training in their respective areas. I was also able to speak with members of each of our local fire departments and listen to their concerns. On April the 15th, the day prior to the fire school, Judge Hoak entered an order stating that three impaled cars that had been located here at the courthouse for some time could be removed from the grounds and be destroyed. And I was here at the courthouse and I went ahead and authorized County Administrator Judy Johnson to allow those vehicles to be moved so that the fire school could utilize those in their training. On April the 18th, I visited with the third graders from Parks, Rangers, and West Hamlet Elementary Schools with Judy Johnson and the Director of the Solid Waste Authority, Marianne Holdren, Holdren, to talk about recycling and also litter. We talked to the students about have pride in Lincoln County, let's clean up the county. And we also reminded the students of the importance of collecting the pop tabs and how we're going to allow the school with the most pop tabs to have a party at the end of the year. During the visit to Ranger, we got to experience firsthand the $500 the commission donated to the school at the last meeting. The students were able to go in and look at the books and we were able to actually browse through the books with the kids and see that when you do make donations from this level, when parents and teachers and volunteers come, that it does make a positive impact to the communities. And it's really a way to reinvest in our children and help them grow as individuals. I attended the election training seminar with the workers of the Washington District. The training seemed to meet the purpose of breaking into smaller groups instead of having just two large ones and being more intimate and giving a more hands-on approach to each district. During the training, the relaxed atmosphere provided the people in the room, since there was a small group, a chance to interact during the session, which I think allowed them to feel more comfortable with asking questions. I applaud the county clerk, Donna Whitman, because I think that by breaking into smaller groups, that our election workers will be better equipped to handle any kind of situations that might come up election day. Today, I visited the precincts of Midway, Woodville, Corcoran, Mud River, Duval, and Garrett's Bend. Christie Scracks, the elections officer in the county, asked that I go with her for the purpose of taking photos to help prepare a grant. The state has money available for facilities that do not meet requirements in order for people with any type of physical disability to be able to access the facility. We do have some of those, so we're going to put together a grant and seek funding. And just another way that I think it shows that our county clerks office, the county clerk's working to make things better for the people of the county and do a positive approach to making sure that everybody has access to voting. Along with Commissioner McCann, Delegate Stowers, and Assessor Tracy Dempsey, went to Ranger today to meet with the family of Aster Atkins. The students from the fourth grade had worked on a resolution and they were trying to get a bridge renamed after Aster, but that was not able to be done. So in the meantime, Delegate Stowers has decided, had decided to approach the governor and get a proclamation from the governor honoring Aster, which is what was presented today to his family. In communication with Hannah Ball, Hannah lives on Garrett's Bend off of the Tony Branch. And I'm sure some of you probably noticed on the news yesterday and today, they have a flooding issue and there's a low-water bridge. I visited the bridge today and it's a situation that the commission can't correct on our own. So at the next meeting, I want to ask that we have a resolution on the agenda so that we can see if the state row will work with us to try to correct the problem if there is a solution. And I went to the Left Fork meeting at the Mud River Fire Department on Wednesday and Mike was there. I was a little late, but I was able to get there for the end of the meeting and appreciate Mike going to the meeting and answering the questions that people had about the proposed water experience for that area. That's all I have.
Busy. Just a few items, Chair, a couple of Thomas mentioned. Continue to work on that improvement to shooting range. I did go up here on Monday and met with the boy Finley and trying to look at what we might do to make more parking, maybe picnic area. And also, we've been in the process of increasing the number of targets, particularly for pistols range, just less than 25 yards. In the afternoon, that same day, I was in a phone conference with the governor and others in trying to get the declaration declared on the Big Ugly area, particularly due to the flooding. And Alan Holden, I participated in that conference and, and as a result, I think the declaration was declared, but lots of damage over there, lots of unreal. I'm sure that we've got people here probably could relate to that, but there's broad branches, really one of those cloudburst type things, really wiped it almost out, I guess, bridges and those kinds of things. Also, on the 13th, as a board member of Tri-River Transit, attended that meeting. And basically, we started a meeting on a highlight of having a little covered dish breakfast, something we'd never done before, but we decided to try that and I got the opportunity to bring bread, so I baked biscuits, so. It, they turned out fair. In attendance, of course, in addition to myself, Tom Scarpellini, Roddy Miketh, Tom Bowen, Sandy Burton. One of the main issues that we discussed at the meeting was really led by Larry Stutler, funny issue we had been concerned about since we put the new building out there and that was getting a wider, better road access into the facility as well as the 901. And Mr. Stutler did report to us that everything was in place and that the EDA would be providing a two-lane road with gravel burn time summers over. They have planned here soon to start that. Also, we had an update on our budget from Paul Smith. Everything seems to be in place and all counties have come up with their commitment of the forty thousand dollars. On the 18th, we always each year celebrate the special day, really, and it's been going on for a number of years here in Lincoln County, trying to recognize the child, just focus on children, a ceremony of focus on children who may have been, for one reason or another, violated or abused or whatever. And it's just one of those things that you think, well, who's going to look after these kids that hasn't been treated properly? But when you listen to all the people, from the judge to the prosecutor to the Department of Human Services, to the school system, all those people involved, the county commission, there's lots of people out there that's really are concerned about our children and making sure they're properly looked after. And basically, this, this day is a ceremony of raising the flag and, and just showing that there is support. And Hamlin Elementary Kids, a couple of classes did participate in this activity. And just one of those things they've done year after year and they continue to provide that. And I think it's great. As Thomas mentioned, attended the meeting today, Ranger, meet Pam Crum and her class, who we have seen here in the audience earlier, about what they might be able to do in this bridge thing. And I think the way it turned out, it was really an educational opportunity for the class and the whole school. Because what we did today was a, a nice little ceremony, was the kids all in the multipurpose room. And I can't imagine how they managed to do it, but the duration of the ceremony, they sat on the floor and you didn't hear any noise. It was just so quiet and they were listening and just, it was appreciated time as far as I was concerned. Seems like the family of Aster Atkins, all those people were happy with us taking time from Josh down to the commission, trying to recognize an individual who had a kind heart and loved his community. So it worked out well, although the bridge that we set out to help get named didn't work out, but it's going to work out, I think it's probably much better. The kids got a lot out of it, I think. Continue to work on the last Corcoran, Roddy Breedlove Day, which is Thursday. Have spoke with Bruce Hager and Christie Limble, trying to finalize the plans. And I think we've got everything down, other than maybe the church bells to ring, but we're still working on that. So everything seems to be coming in place. Thank you. Oh, one other note, I did, Frances Holm called me today and I forgot to go back home and get, he's going to email me, but they have been meeting and come up with their final plans on the LEPC, the planning committee. And he says that he would have been here if we hadn't changed the meeting. Waited till Thursday, but he'd taken vacation, so. But he, I'll have something to give out at the next meeting. He said everything's in place and bylaws have pretty much been worked on and everybody's agreed to it, so things are moving forward on that. Now, thank you.
Just one thing for me to record that tomorrow at eight o'clock in the beginning, and Johnson's simulated.
Nine.
At nine?
I think nine to 11.
And it's, yes. And then it takes the radios to the police, to the, what, communication, transportation, and through the health department.
At Midway.
Right, starts at Midway. And they're going to have some people at the 901, but I just wanted to do that. I have nothing else. Do they else have anything?
So we're testing machines on the 22nd.
Which is Friday.
One o'clock.
Commissioners, on May the 2nd, that's on Monday, we've changed our meeting to, to May the 2nd. We have that at four o'clock instead of six o'clock. And the reason being is we have elections training at six o'clock.
On May the 2nd.
May the 2nd.
Please make note of that on the agenda and in the record, meeting on May the 2nd will be four o'clock instead of six. Also, Route 10 group will meet that day at two o'clock. Anything else for the good of the group? Hearing none, take a motion to adjourn.
So moved second.
Six fifty-five.
Four fifty-five.
If that's what you're using.